I'd like to call the October 13 regular meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please arise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Hopefully, you all meant to be here and not blown in by the high winds. We'll go ahead and get things going. Take the roll call.
Stephenson.
Here.
Kerry.
Here.
Kimball.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Schlothauer.
Here.
Hampi.
Here.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening, Mr. Manley?
There's none.
Any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations?
I would like to announce, though, we have a new Planning and Zoning Commission member, Ross Schlothauer. He's new to the commission.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Any declaration of conflict tonight?
None.
Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move on. Consent calendar. Mr. Manley, you want to go over that?
Yeah. Item A is the meeting minutes from September 8, 2020. And item B is the creative home zone change file number RZNE 4-2020, the reasoned decision.
All right. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to take a look at that. If so, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kerry?
I abstain. I wasn't here.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
All right. That moves us to citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not on the agenda this evening. Comments on issues that are for planned meetings were asked to hold until those meetings. Anyone here having citizen issues? Seeing none? Unfinished or old business?
There's none.
All right. That will bring us to the main portion of this evening, and that is our public hearings. We do have two of those. So we'll go ahead and start off, and we will open the Cromwell-McCarthy annexation.
Good evening, Commission. John Manley, planning manager here with the City of Post Falls. I'll be introducing the Colwell-McCarthy annexation case file ANNX 4-2020. The owner is McCarthy Capital, Inc. You can see in Exhibit A10 that they're now the current owners of that. The applicant is Dobler Engineering from Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. The request is for you to recommend to City Council a zoning designation of residential mixed as part of an annexation request of 4.7 acres to allow single-family attached and detached You may see that in your, and I'll go into further details in the staff report, it was mentioned of some R2 duplex zoning. Under further investigation and analysis on our new comp plan and with discussions with the applicant, it was retracted to a smaller scope to single-family attached and detached. Looking at the location of this proposal, you see here that it's just west of Greens Ferry Road at this location, just north of Greens Ferry Elementary. They're in the red hatched. What you see in the white hatched area is the remaining county pocket areas. Looking at the surrounding environment, when you're on the site, it kind of looks like a big field. It kind of is when you're looking west currently. It is just west. You see here, we got the subdivision Green Meadows that's being developed, and I'll have pictures of that here within the slide showing that if you look to the east, this is that subdivision that's currently going just across the street to the east. Looking south, that's what you see south on the site. North, you know, more acreage. But when you look to the northeast, you see that Green Meadows East developing to the east northerly, and you can see the road improvements that have occurred. Water would be provided at this site by Ross Point Water District. Sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. So when you look at the zone change review criteria, we got six of them. These three are clustered because thematically they're kind of go together. One, we look as a consistent with the future land use map. Look at the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. If you look in the staff report, there is more of an analysis of how it met all the goals and policies of this per their intent. Here's the zoning. As you see here, everything surrounding it is intended to be R1, single-family, so a single-family type housing adjacent to this. Looking at the future land use map, you can see here that it's all designated for low-density residential in the comp plan, which allows for single-family up to eight dwelling units an acre. Their intent is to be about 6.3 or so. So it would meet that proposal and that limitations for low-density residential. Going back to the third one, you also look at street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, any geographic or natural features. You see in the staff report, there was no concerns regarding the traffic patterns or street classifications in the area for that, nor any geographical or natural features of concerns. Kind of mentioned the low-density residential and kind of the purpose of it. Also, that the intent is also to look at densities that may vary in the location, planned development patterns and compatibility with the existing. And it looks at some different zoning for implementing zones. So it suggests R1S, R1, RM, which is that residential mix that they're asking for, as well as the smart code three. So those are your single-family type zones or other types of developments compatible. Looking at the other set of criteria, we look at the commercial and high-density residential zoning, and that it's typically assigned for higher road classifications. They're not asking for high density, but when you look for single-family, 6.23 is kind of a higher density force, a single-family product. So probably is more consistent along your higher roads than maybe internally, but maybe not necessarily incompatible. So it'd be consistent with this criteria. And then going into the next one, starts looking at neighborhood commercial and lower density, being assigned farther away from your intense urban activity areas. Greens Ferry more likely is going to be a fairly intense road, but as far when you look at land use activities, probably isn't a very active area. So it would be consistent with that. Looking at the last one, the industrial, really wouldn't be applicable to their request. One thing about all the mixed zones, be it the technology mix, the community commercial mix, or the residential mix zones that we now have, they do require a development agreement. And so the intent is, if you guys did want to forward a recommendation of approval, is to acknowledge the fact that there would be the limitation of the single-family attached or detached that would then go forward as part of that residential mix. Agencies routed as part of the request, as you see here. Here's the list. Both the Post Falls Police and the Highway District commented, with the police department being neutral, and the Highway District saying that they have no comment on the proposal. Stand for any questions you have about this project at this point, if you have any?
Question for Mr. Manley this time?
Would you repeat the change at the very beginning you were?
Okay.
R2.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I probably could address that. So as you see here, the low-density residential at this time clearly says that it's all types of single-family uses up to eight dwelling units per acre. So although the residential mix zone may be permitted in other areas, when they're in the low-density area, as it's called out in the comp plan, suggests that they would have to be single-family uses in nature. And so although RM does support, as a zoning district, some other multifamily product, they would be more applicable in different zoning designation, sorry, different land use designations in the comp plan, like medium or a higher-density area. Then they could do the duplex. At this location, though, all that they would be going forward with would be the single-family attached and detached product. Does that help at all?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Applicant?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm getting the wrong one anyways. So I'll bring that back. Is there a particular slide that you'd like me to bring up for you? And here's the clicker if you want to go around.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'll be brief tonight. You've seen the surrounding land use. You've seen the location. I just wanted to bring attention to a few things. So reading from your zoning about where an RM would be applicable is appropriate in areas designated low, medium, or high-density residential or transitional in the comp plan, which this is. Areas readily served by collector arterial streets suitable for higher levels of traffic. As staff pointed out, Greens Ferry is a minor arterial, more than capable of serving traffic we generate from the subdivision. Utilities are present in Greens Ferry, and in fact, water and sewer have already been stubbed to the site. So utilities aren't an issue. And then there's just a few others. Areas where public services are sufficiently available, which we believe they are. And the, okay, so then one other point that I want to bring out is the RM zone comes with a requirement for open space also, and we understand that. It's 7%. In this case, it'll be about a third of an acre. So we'll have a third of an acre local open space usable by residents in the area. We are, we are okay with the refinement that staff made in that it would be single-family either attached or detached. We hadn't really considered duplexes, looking at something along the lines of a twin home product. And few of the lots would probably be big enough to put single-family on, so we're fine with that. That's what we intended to do. That's really it. We feel, obviously, that this is an appropriate use of the RM zoning. It fits the criteria and believe with the restriction to a single-family attached or detached, that it fits with the surrounding land uses and zoning.
Any questions for the applicant? Just so I don't get in trouble in the back, will you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, yeah. Good call. Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering, 1875 Northlake Wood Drive.
Mr. Dobler, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comment?
None in favor, none neutral, and none in opposition.
So that would be none, so no need for rebuttal at this time. Do we have any questions Any questions, applicant, anybody else at this time before we close things out?
No.
No? You're good. Okay. Go ahead and close it out. Open for comment. Anybody care to share their thoughts?
Sure. I'll jump in there. So I think staff has brought us pretty good, and developers or owners has brought us a pretty complete project when it comes to what we should be looking at for annexation. It's an island, it's a property in an island within the, of county, within the city. It's low-density comp plan designation, and the residential mix fits with that. It'll be a really, it's kind of a new zone for us, so it'll be neat to see how that fits and how they take advantage of how unique that zone is going to be. It does meet the, it's consistent with the goals and policies and the comp plan. It's pretty well laid out in the staff report. And I would support a zoning development agreement that limits it to single-family attached or detached.
Anyone else?
Same thing.
Answer?
I would have to agree. I think that obviously it's going to be, it's kind of a pocket there, or it's somewhat of a pocket, and it's going to be annexed. I am much more comfortable specifying the single-family attached and detached than leaving it open to a higher density, so.
Excellent. Okay. No other comment, then I would entertain a motion at this time.
I would move to recommend approval of ANNX-0004-2020. Moving it on to City Council with a recommendation for residential mixed zoning, finding that it's consistent with the land use map, consistent with the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, and that the proposed zoning takes into consideration the, all the applicable plans in our code. And also recommend that housing be limited to a single-family attached or detached product, and that be included in a development agreement.
Hold on a second.
Got a motion and a second. Call for vote?
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All right. So move, that brings us to our second public hearing of the evening. Go ahead and open that up, Mr. Manley.
Yes, thank you. So yes, the Amelia Parvons special use permit. The owner of this area is 102 Acres LLC. Applicant is Drew Dittman of Lake City Engineering, representing the owner. The request is for special use permit approval to construct 402 multifamily housing units on approximately 20 acres with the community commercial zoning district, as permitted with the special use permit, and with the, consistent with the high-density R3 standards. Within the CCS zoning district, it does state that you can allow multifamily only with a special use permit at that R3 design standards and limitations. Looking at the zoning location of the area, you can see here, if I get the mouse going, to the west of this site, it's all community commercial services. That's the red. That's that CCS zoning. To the northeast of that site, it's additional red. That CCS zone. And just directly north across from Expo Parkway is the Woodbridge South Development. And to the south of the project, you have I-90, and then further south, you got industrial zone lands. Looking at the surrounding environment, it kind of shows the area a little bit more with the aerial. You can see, I mean, if you drive out there now, it's amazing. But yeah, Woodbridge South is, picture's not even a year old. It's full of houses now. But yeah, that's the Woodbridge subdivision there. You see with the roads. To the west, you have vacant undeveloped, that commercial land, and then to the east of the site is undeveloped currently. And then you got I-90, and then the Riverbend Commerce Park, just a little bit further to the south. They do intend to do this in two phases at approximately 20.1 dwelling units an acre. So initially, you may be wondering 20, how 20 when R3 is typically at 18 dwelling units an acre. Recently, we've passed multifamily design standards that allow applicants, if they provide certain amenities, to have a little bit of a density bonus, subject to them providing onsite amenities, as stated. So the water provider for this is the City Post Falls, with wastewater also being the provider for this being C Post Falls. Future land use at this location, as you see here in the pink, that's business commercial. And I'll go into kind of what everything that permits here in the next slide, with commercial being south of this and low-density residential being just to the north. So the business commercial, that there's, promotes a mixture of moderate and high-density housing types to go along with other commercial uses that are also allowed within, or encouraged within the business commercial. But they cite in the comp plan that the high-density housing preferably would be within walking distance of areas such as the city center, other neighborhood centers in Post Falls, or corridor commercial uses. Being the fact to the west of this, you have the Wadsworth Development. And I'll go back to the west. This area is a corridor commercial area with, and I think the most recent development was Panda Express. We got Walmart out there, Cabela's, and other commercial uses are intended to be out to the west. So this would be an area considered a corridor commercial zone. And then when you look at the implementing zones within that business commercial, you do see this list of limited commercial CCS, CCM, TM, R2, R3, SC4, and SC5. So you do see that multifamily is cited as a potential. And I know they're not looking for a zone. They're looking for a special use permit. But a special use permit would be consistent with that R3 as an implementing zone. Project description. I apologize for the askew and the light lines, but it's the best I have to work with on this. But I-90 is just directly south of the project, and here's Expo Parkway to the north. You can see the dispersment of the units throughout the site, the internal road circulation that's intended. They do have a dog park on the east side, a dog park to the southwest corner, as well as open space clubhouse and other amenities centrally located within this project, all intended to meet the multifamily design standards and bonuses they would need to get to that 20.1. Here's the elevations of their proposed project. You can see the three-story structures on this slide. So special use permits have four review criteria that I'll go into. This is part of the review. First one is implementation of the special use permit will or will not conform to purposes of the applicable zoning district. I just cite here in italics that the CCS zone does cite multifamily residential uses as being appropriate at times within that CCS zone. The reason being is oftentimes you have commercially zoned properties in Post Falls that may make more sense as multifamily than commercial, depending on its location. And it also supports commercial and employment centers. Multifamily projects, they do have to go through the site plan review process to make sure it meets all city requirements before being permitted. Second criteria is whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use within the zoning district. I think I've already cited this a few times, but it is an allowable use through the special use permit, and the land use table also cites that accordingly. Third criteria is whether the proposed use will or not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public, or with the land uses in the vicinity. Within the staff report, you can see that it's cited that the proposal would not have negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the area. It is also cited within the staff report that the proposal could buffer some of the impacts of the higher road classifications to this site, and it could provide some housing for the commercial centers and employment centers nearby. You can see here is a image of the area that they're intending to put the project. You've got the I-90 just to the east. You can't see it that well, but here's the Beckner Change Off Ramp, and you see the houses off to the north at Woodbridge, off on the left side of the screen. So when you look at those elevations and what the applicant is proposing, and why some of the comments are in the staff report as they may be, the applicant intends to provide a 15-foot wide buffer along the I-90 right away at this location, meeting the Type A planting schedule and the landscape code. That's not a requirement, but they want to attempt to dilute some of the impacts of I-90 onto this neighborhood, as well as you see staff citing that the arrangement of these buildings and its proximity to Woodbridge could reduce the amount of noise and light that would infiltrate into that neighborhood. You could look at it, if it was commercial, what you would get is some larger big-box stores potentially, and some parking lots. You may end up with a scenario where you would end up with a less of an impeding element to that light and noise. Here, though, if you look at it, it'd be a very, being the fact that the majority of them are three foot, three feet tall, doesn't lead a lot of opportunities for noise and light to go in. It still will. I don't think there's no way you can 100% mitigate the effects of I-90. Looking at the transportation criteria of this, there is nothing cited that the proposal would have an adverse reaction to the transportation network nearby. And there is two interchanges in close proximity of this project. You can see the road classification. I got the project area highlighted in blue here. Purple line, that's a major collector that this is adjacent to, and it terminates to the east and to the west into both arterials, minor arterials, that then connect into those interchanges. You see Pleasant View off to the east and back off to the west. Fire protection, that's typically handled at the time of site plan review, where fire department gets it, makes sure that they get the appropriate access to accommodate the units being proposed. The other criteria is looking at whether or not the proposal would be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. The most pertinent goal is, as you hear, see here, is plan for quantity of land uses for cities' long-term sustainability. And here's a list of a policy within that goals. One, maintain enhanced community level service, foster long-term fiscal health of the community, maintain enhanced residential life, promote compatibility and well-designed development, and implement goals and policies at the comp plan. So I kind of go into each one of these, and when it comes to level of service, Parks denoted as part of their comment that a portion, the half, the northerly half portion is within their area of service, with the southern half not being in that. It would be considered below that. In the staff report, you did see staff, though, acknowledge that the open space requirements outside of getting the density bonus, that there's a minimum of 300 square feet per unit, two-bedroom unit or greater, as being required. So there's some substantial open space that would be required up to about 2.7 acres maximum to as low as 1.4 acres if they're all one-bedrooms. So there's some open space elements to this and amenities to help offset some of that. You see here is that map that was proposed in your staff report, showing the purple. That's where it's, where it would meet. The yellow is the area outside that it'd be below. So... So in regards to health community, when it comes to multifamily, fiscal health and multifamily, it's, there's no real clear answer to this. A lot of it depends on a lot of variables. A lot of it, and you see within the policies of the comp plan, is looking at multifamily being well-sighted. I mean, are they close to your transportation nodes, your urban centers where your services- I mean, are they close to your transportation nodes, your urban centers where your services are at, are they close to commercial services, employment? When you do that, you're making it more fiscally sustainable than otherwise. Poorly cited single-family and multifamily developments probably have more of a negative effect, and that would be if you're putting multifamily in areas that would be inconsistent with the comp plan, or single-family even really on the outskirts of town where there's a higher cost to service that for the long-term O and M of the roads and services rendered for those products. Maintain an enhanced residential quality of life. So I kind of listed a lot of the stuff I already mentioned, the planned open space, the landscape buffer and its role mitigating potentially some of the effects of I-90, the future uses. I haven't mentioned this. Being centrally located, though, is one of those things to where if you were to reside at a location like this, you would have easy access to I-90 for those that maybe work in Coeur d'Alene, or Spokane, or anywhere in Post Falls for that matter. Promote compatibility, well-designed development. A lot of this goes into stuff that's already been mentioned. The last one, policy is implement goals and policies of the comp plan. In the staff report, it really said it wasn't applicable. I'd probably want to say that it, more or less, all of what you've seen tonight are policies in the comp plan, and those have been answered within the staff report. Here's the agencies that were notified. Post Falls Police Comment, it is neutral on the proposal. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
I got one really quick, John, that has to do with the buffers. You mentioned one of the type A, we have a type B and type C, and can you, which one is, which are biggest?
The biggest is type C.
Okay. And how big is that?
That is 25 feet wide.
Okay.
And the planting schedule is more intense. I don't have the planting schedule memorized, but.
That answers my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was going to be my question. What type of landscaping buffer would we be talking about here? What's an example?
Well, I know the type A through here, that they're, that being proposed is four deciduous trees and four evergreen trees every 100 feet, along with some shrubs and bushes. I believe then when you go to type B, it goes to five, and I believe at type C, it goes to six. But that don't necessarily, every 100 feet, deciduous and evergreens alternating.
Okay. And then Expo Parkway would just be the buffer to the top, you know, so we got the street and then sidewalks and whatever, and that's?
Yeah, you'd have the fence that's, the subdivision has a six-foot fence as part of it, and then you have the road wideaway, right away, and then you have that separation from that fence, more or less, to those buildings.
Gotcha.
That's what, about an 80-foot right-of-way? 75, 80?
I'm looking for. It's 80? About there.
About 80. So it's almost, well, it's triple the type C.
Yeah.
Buffer width?
Yeah, more, yeah. You don't have the planning schedule, but you do get that separation distance there with that right-of-way. Any other questions?
Did you say there was a partial fence?
There, Woodbridge South, they installed, as part of their subdivision, they did a perimeter fence along their.
Okay. So on the other side of the road, there's?
Yeah, on the north side of the road, correct.
No fencing plans on this side, their side, though? Just natural buffer?
I do not know. That would be something you could probably ask the applicant to plan for the fence. I didn't see that on these plans. I do know that on the south side of the project, I do believe that there's some plans there.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Manley? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We'll now invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering 126, East Poplar Avenue in the city of Coeur d'Alene, representing tonight Watson and Associates. So 102 acres was listed as the owner, that's J.R. Watson and Company. They've owned that property out there for 40-ish years. I've been working on it for over 21 years, so I'm a little bit familiar with, with the site and what's going on out there. Also representing, Rudin Development tonight. Rudin is the developer that's buying the property from the Watson Group. As John had, had shown you guys, here's the property in red, so this would be Expo Parkway that comes through here, the Woodbridge South subdivision, the Woodbridge subdivision, and then you've got obviously Interstate 90 and Beck Road right here. It is zoned commercial, that's why we're here tonight asking for the special use permit, which, you know, is an allowable use. High-density residential is an allowable use in the CCS through this process, that's why we're here tonight. It is 20 acres, we're asking for 402 units. I guess I'll, I'll back up a little, but I have been working on that Expo project for, for quite a long time, longer than I think you guys have been sitting on P and Z. By the way, welcome, Ross, nice to see you up there. And yes, I'm guilty of standing in front of city council and P and Z and changing the zones out there more times than I can remember over the last 20 years, and trying to manufacture some progress, and trying to make things work. And, and we're getting there, and we're making things work, and we're seeing a lot of progress out there. As John had indicated, I mean, we're almost built out in Woodbridge South, and we're going on year three of that project, so it's nice to see a lot of that going. I know Watson's got a lot of deals going on, the Pleasant View corridor stuff, and up on the Innovation Way stuff. A lot of that property is sold, and you see a lot of stuff going in there, so it's good now to finally see, after 20 years, a lot of that being built out. Here's the site plan, I'll get into that in a minute. I was planning to go through the criteria, John went through all of these, so I'm really not going to go over what he did again. You guys have heard it from him, if you have questions, feel free to ask me them. Obviously, we feel we meet all of those criteria, we feel we are in conformance with the comprehensive plan. As John had said, it is in the business commercial category in the future land use map, which, which allows this type of, of use. I guess I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the site plan itself. 402 units on 20 acres is what we're proposing, it's a little over 20 units to the acre. As John had indicated traditionally, in the R3, you're allowed 18 units an acre, but with some new code amendments, there is that provision for bonus density if we provide certain amenities, and I'll get into that in a minute. And we are providing a ton of amenities on this project. As a matter of fact, we're providing over, almost three acres of usable open space, which is about 15% of the site. So that's a pretty big number of open space for an apartment project. If you guys are familiar with the Crown Point Apartments that we did a few years back, very similar product type, very similar look, the clubhouse will be almost identical to that one, if you're familiar with that at all. We have a couple different building types in here. We have a 24-unit, three-story big building that John had showed the rendering of. We have some six-unit, more traditional apartments, garage-under kind of apartments, which you've seen. We also have some two-unit buildings where you have some garages and two units above, so we're trying to mix up the, the, the type of buildings that we have in there, and just don't want to, you know, a whole bunch of big buildings in there. So we are doing that. Here are some of the amenities we're providing. Lots of open space, we tried to spread it out so that, because it is a big site, it's 20 acres, it's just a big site, so we wanted to kind of, and we worked with, with John and staff on that, and we really wanted to have a centralized, large, open area that could be utilized, but we also wanted to provide certain open spaces throughout the project so that you didn't have to walk from one side of the project to the other to, to use the open space. We do have two dog parks that we're proposing, one in each corner, one down in here, and one down in here, again, just to try to spread things out a little bit, so you're not walking across the project with, with your pet. Pets are becoming more and more frequent in apartment projects that we're doing, so we're trying to make every effort we can to make them pet-friendly and, and whatnot. The large open space in the middle, so you can kind of see here, so you come in, so this is Expo Parkway here, you'll come in the main entrance, have kind of a roundabout here with the clubhouse. The clubhouse will have a dog wash, outside dog wash facility attached to the back of the building, that you can just spray your dog off completely outside, so you don't really got to worry about the mess out there. Right next to that, we've got, it's tough to see here, but you've got walking paths that are going to go to a big gazebo structure that we've planned with some barbecue pits, so you could have a picnic or a family gathering out there. And then this large open area that has some trails going through it, some park benches and whatnot. We're planning on doing a little community garden area right there, so people can, can grow some vegetables or grow some flowers in there as well. So again, we are providing a large variety of amenities, almost 15%. And yes, so some of those are allowing us to take advantage of that bonus density. We're not fully taking advantage of it, because I think I calculated we could get up to like 23 units an acre, but we're 20 units an acre, so we'd like to take advantage of that if we can. As John had indicated, we are proposing a landscape buffer along the freeway. In talking with staff, we decided on a type A. We're not opposed to a type B, if, if you guys feel that's more appropriate, based on the tree spacing and so on and so forth, we're not opposed to that. We will have fencing along the interstate. We didn't plan to fence along Expo Parkway, didn't really want to enclose the whole project and have that closed infield, but I guess we're probably not opposed to it, if you guys think that's a good idea. I know that was brought up. But there is sufficient separation there across Expo. Actually, Ray, I think Expo Parkway is like 100 foot wide, if I'm not mistaken. Rob, Rob can correct me if I'm wrong. It's, it's pretty wide right of-way, it's, so.
Any questions for me?
I do, I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
So two phases, right?
Yeah, you, this, you can't really tell, my cursor here. So there's a line, this dashed line that kind of runs down the middle here, and then goes like that, that's the phase line, kind of splits it in half.
So how long between phases?
That's really market-dependent. You look at Crown Point as an example, although it was phased, it really wasn't, because we just kept going. We never really stopped. We built phase one and then just proceeded right into phase two. So it wasn't a stop, you know, delay in there. We would anticipate that, but again, it's going to be market-driven.
And so the clubhouse would go in phase one?
Clubhouse is going to go in phase one.
Dog park, and so you've got some of those amenities going in, in phase one?
Correct, and that's why we tried to spread some of it out, too. So again, you can see that dashed line.
Okay.
There, so there will be amenities in phase one, the clubhouse will definitely be built with, with phase one. The gazebo, the, the dog wash facilities, the barbecue pits will be in phase one. Probably not all of the trail system will be, but you'll have a lot of that open space.
And then parking is my other question, and, and I, I'm sure it's in here, and, but can you refresh me? How, how much parking is there?
We have at least two parking stalls per unit, which is above and beyond what's required. I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head.
For some reason, it was, was it five? I want to say 597?
No, I don't know.
I could be wrong.
No, I thought it was way more than that. I don't recall the exact number.
But each unit will have parking?
Yes, and, and we have garages, so not each unit will get a garage, but there are garages throughout, so lost my cursor.
So above and beyond the parking spaces?
So these are, these are actually garage units right here, these two units.
Okay.
These two units are, are garages. Underneath, as I said, you have these type of units, which have two units above, but garages underneath.
Okay.
So.
Oh, and then just one other question about, you did say fence along I-90?
Yes.
Okay. So there'll be a fence and then the, and then the, the buffer of the plantings?
There'll be the fence, then the landscape buffer, correct, and then, and then the buildings, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, all buildings are three stories?
No, they're not. The 24-unit buildings are three stories, the six-unit buildings are two stories, the two-unit garage-under buildings are two stories, so it's a mix of, of that. And, and there was some, some renderings that should have been in your packet that we submitted. I didn't bring any pictures.
Yeah, I looked at. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
You said the product will be similar to what's in Crown Point?
Correct.
Do you know how big Crown Point is, that apartment area?
264 units? I don't know how many acres it is. I want, 15? I want to say it's 15 acres, yeah, ish.
Commissioner Hamp, I was just looking at the application, it looks like total parking is 597.
Okay.
That's what's listed on the.
Okay, so about 600.
Site plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant? Mr. Dittman? All right, thank you, sir.
Chairman.
Public comment, in favor?
None.
Neutral?
None.
Opposed? All right. Amber, remind me, is there a spot in here whether they wish to speak?
So, the first two?
Mm-hmm.
They were submitted online, so they're not here.
Right, so we saw those.
Those were in our staff report, right?
Those were attached?
Those were after.
Oh, these were after?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then the other two normal forms, those two ladies would like to speak tonight.
That makes perfect sense, so we have, okay. Okay, so Samantha, is it Steigenlander? I could have butchered that, if so, I apologize. Would implementation of the proposed special use permit conform to the purpose of the applicable zoning district? Yes. Is the requested special use permit an allowable use in the application zoning district? And does the special use permit comply with all the applicable laws, ordinances, regulations of the state and city? Yes. Will the proposed special use permit be compatible for health, safety, and the welfare of the public, or with the land use in the vicinity of the proposed? No. Comment is, no evidence has been submitted to show that another, because currently we have many high-density housing projects would provide any benefit to the welfare of current residents of Post Falls. The only assertion is to increase housing types for the projected population growth. I am not in favor for another extremely large project that has not offered any real benefits to those presently residing in Post Falls. Will the proposed special use comply to the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan? Yes. I see no reason that the proposed contradicts the current comprehensive plan, however, if one is not in favor of adding additional, and often higher-density housing in almost half of the neighborhoods in Post Falls as it plans lays out, then one may still be opposed to special use permit despite compliance with the comprehensive plan. There's one. The next one is Chris Morgan. Would the implemented, implementation of the proposed special use permit conform to the purpose of the applicable zone district? No. Is the requested special use an allowable use within the applicable zone district? And, and does the special use permit comply with all other applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations of the state and city? No. Number three, will the proposed special use permit be compatible with health, safety, and welfare of the public, with land use in the vicinity of the proposed, or proposal? No. And lastly, will the proposed special use permit comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan? No. No additional comments. So, with that said, we have two other individuals that are in opposition that do wish to speak. Again, make sure that if you are coming forward, state your name and address. If you're staying there and have the microphone, just state your name and address, and you have four minutes. So we'll go ahead and get the timer ready, and I will start with Amelia, is it Apt or Op? Oh, that's the, you're right. How about Donna Gates? Let's do that one. All right, Donna.
Well, I think everybody knows my name now, I'm Donna Gates. My husband is Bill Gates, but he's the older, poorer one, so I'm just going to let you know that ahead of time. We moved here from Oregon a year ago, mainly because I needed to get to where there was people that had some morals and believed that kindness to others. people that had some morals and believed that kindness to others. Originally, I'm from Nebraska, so you know where I'm at. My husband was not. But anyway, I'm very concerned about this, and when I hear him talk about the traffic, and he's putting 402 units in with two parkings for every unit, and it's, I say, a husband and wife, that makes four, that makes 804 cars on the road that's not there now. That's a concern to me. I also live, of course, we're retired, I also live in Woodbridge, and we have a lot of young children, a lot of young children. And right now, they can still kind of play in the streets. But coming from Oregon and watching the apartments that are built around the houses, there is so much crime going on, and that's a concern to me. And a lot of people were concerned that these apartments were low-income. Low-income brings in prostitution, drugs, and everything else. And I think it's unfair for us that have moved here and invested in our homes to have to worry about people from all these apartments. We've already got condominiums built that was there, that are coming in, and the crime rate is going to go up. Is there any guarantee that that won't happen and you're going to keep us safe from everybody that lives in these apartments? Also, traffic is just, like I said, you can't convince me with 804 cars, that's not going to have an impact on traffic, because it is. Now, we're retired, I have no children, but I would like to leave my home sometimes in the wintertime and go, and not worry about my home getting broke into and vandalized, which is why I moved here, because I thought it was a really safe community. But you're building all these apartments all the way around, these people that live in houses, and who do they want to break into? It's people that live in houses. They want our TVs and our computers and everything else. That's a definite concern of mine. And the more apartments you build, the more problems you're going to have. And that really worries me. And coming from Oregon, believe me, I got out of there before the tenterers come on our property. I mean, I was scared to death, and I wanted out. And so that's why I moved here. Now I'm a little worried that you're going to turn us back into Oregon or into California by putting all this stuff up and putting in low-income and all kinds of people in there. That really worries me, because I really want Idaho to stay a safe area. And so this is a real concern of mine. I think there are places you can build apartments that aren't so close to houses that have a lot of small children. I realize money's a big factor, and we all want to get rich fast, but I can't see getting rich at the sake of small children. And that really does concern me a lot, because a lot of Californians came into Oregon. Oregon was great when I moved there, but Californians moved in, built all these apartments and everything else, and it just went downhill. And I really don't want that to happen here, because I'm quite frankly, too old to move again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Davis, if I might, a quick reminder to the board and to the folks who are testifying. Under federal law, the Fair Housing Act, there's certain things that we can't consider, and some of what you just heard is tiptoeing right up to that line. I want to read to you quickly from a joint statement that was issued by the Department of Justice and the Housing and Department of Housing and Urban Development, speaking about what crosses the line dealing with Fair Housing Act. As you're aware, the Fair Housing Act protects people of all races, colors, religion, creeds, disability, from discrimination in housing, not only from intentional discrimination, but unintentional discrimination. In the joint statement, it's in the form of a question and answer, and the question number five is, does a state or local government violate the Fair Housing Act if it considers fears or prejudices of community members when enacting or applying its zoning law, zoning or land use laws respecting housing? The answer, when enacting or applying zoning laws or land use laws, state and local governments may not act because of the fears, prejudices, stereotypes, or unsubstantiated assumptions that community members may have about current or prospective residents because of the resident's protective, excuse me, protected characteristics. Doing so violates the Act, even if the officials themselves do not personally share such bias. For example, a city may not deny zoning approval for low-income housing development that meets all zoning and land use requirements, because the development may house residents of a particular protected class or classes whose presence the community fears will increase crime or lower property values in the surrounding neighborhood. That type of analysis just isn't allowed, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Okay, duly noted, thank you very much. Kathy Mitchell, you have four minutes, if you give us name and address. Thank you.
Kathy Mitchell, 421, North Almondwood Drive in Post Falls, right by this deal here. I just start writing a list when I heard you're speaking, and let's, I'll just start at the top and go down. The Woodbridge Park is nowhere going to be able, it doesn't even have the ability to take care of the children in our neighborhood right now. How is it going to take these people coming in with their children going to Woodbridge, whether it be the big park or the tiny park? And the tiny park is, you know, right next to the south, Woodbridge South. The road Expo at Love's, it's five, five lanes wide. Over by this apartment complex is two lanes, and by UPS, it's three lanes wide. So I don't see it being wide enough for the amount of people that'll be coming into that apartment area. I know indeed, there's really no easy access, there's no really good business access. I've been there 12 years. I love my neighborhood. I'm not opposed to having apartments, but I am opposed to super large, the one on the corner that just got built on the northwest corner of Seltice and Beck. Therein, I think your last meeting, the condos just got approved at Seltice and Creative. Now we just found, I just found out that there's a new low-income coming in at Creative and Expo, and now we've got this one coming in behind us. The people, you know, the community's been there 15 years. It'd be nice to kind of not have all the apartments, but I understand, but I don't. I don't feel it's correct and right to have this much coming in that neighborhood. Me being disabled for the last 16 years, broke my neck twice in 16 years, and I use my scooter to go to these places, and I can't wait for the businesses to come in. So I can use my scooter, not my vehicle, with all the traffic coming in. With this high-density traffic that's going to be in, there's no way I'll be able to use my scooter safely. The, and then, I don't know, just getting surrounded, and we're, my grandkids are fifth-generation Post Falls and fifth-generation Coeur d'Alene. I realize growth is coming, I realize it's happening, but can't you find lots in the middle of a field and let the people choose to move to the apartment complexes instead of having our homes here for 15 years and having the apartments surround us? That's kind of sad for me. I'm waiting for the businesses to come in, so I can shop my neighborhood instead of having to go to my former hometown of Coeur d'Alene to shop, that I don't go to hardly ever anymore. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Rebuttal, Mr. Dittman, do you want any time?
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Thank you, ladies, for your comments. I do appreciate it. Drew Dittman, again, for the record. The first two comments that you read in really had to do with compatibility and the comprehensive plan, and I think both John and I kind of went through that in our presentations. We do feel it's compatible. Multifamily is your traditional buffer between commercial uses and single-family uses. That's the traditional planning model, so from that standpoint, it's a great use. It is in conformance with the comp plan. The business, commercial district, we went through that. It's not low-income housing, I can assure you that. You guys have seen me before, I've done lots of apartments here. Rudeen's been around for a long time, they do lots of apartments. They're not low-income, they're not subsidized. Again, if you're familiar with the Crown Point stuff, or the Remington Apartments in Post Falls, that's what these guys do. You guys have recently adopted your new multifamily housing standards, too, which is going to elevate what we do. Additional open space, you traditionally don't get that in an apartment complex, 15 percent open space with all the additional amenities that we're adding. So it's a far cry from low-income. I hear that a lot. I do a lot of apartment projects, and everywhere I go, whether it's Coeur d'Alene or Post Falls, or Liberty Lake, or even Tri-Cities, that's the main comment we always hear, oh, we don't need more low-income apartments, that apartments have a bad misnomer, if you will, and I just don't think that's the case here, I really don't. Transportation, Expo Parkway is a major collector. It's designed to handle a huge volume of traffic. You've got freeway, interstate access, half a mile this way, interstate access, a half a mile that way. It's a great location for that. As far as traffic's concerned, the property zone commercial, there could be much more intensive uses from a traffic standpoint than multifamily that could go there as an allowed, outright allowed use without coming in front of this body for any kind of approval. So I don't think traffic's an issue. It was addressed in the staff report, staffs reviewed it, they didn't feel that traffic was going to be an issue. Think that addresses the concerns. Is there any additional questions for me?
Anything for Mr. Dittman?
No. Thank you, guys, I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions? We need Rob up here for anything, for clarification. Everybody's fine. Transportation, roads, good concerns. Okay? Any other questions for staff before we close it out? Okay, we'll go ahead and close it out. I'll open it up for comment, if anybody has anything to add.
I guess I'll start. So as a special use permit, from the evidence we've heard tonight, evidence in the staff report, it appears to meet all the criteria. But I want to kind of go on beyond that, and here's kind of where I'm coming from on it. So from an open space standpoint, from a design layout, it's got a lot of amenities. It's got all of those things that, in a lot of times, end up being a, in a lot of ways, it's kind of like a self-contained little residential community. It's got the clubhouse and the places to recreate. You know, now, now, the real estate market in Post Falls, now the, today, the starter home is $300,000. That's a $2,000 a month payment, and kids who are graduating from high school or even college don't have that in their pocketbook to be able to buy a house right away. And so, you know, in my company, where I work, we hire young engineers right out of college, and most of them live in apartments when we first hire them. And it takes them two, three years, and we pay really well, but still, it takes them several years to get to a point where they've saved up enough money for a down payment for a house. So we end up having this huge demand where this is, it's this gap, where they're either going to live in their parents' basement, or they're going to need a place to live, and that ends up being these apartments. And so that's where these are, that's why there's this demand. And for a developer to come in on a property that could end up being, for instance, to just say, it could be a Lowe's with semi-trucks backing up the loading docks all night, and instead, it's a residential community that's got open space and amenities and walking trails and all of those things that make for a great place to live, and it's open market, so it's, so they're, they get to compete against all the other apartments out there for renters and people who are trying, so they're trying to make it the nicest place possible. And I, so from that standpoint, I think it's, it's good. The buffer requirements, the largest buffer we have in our code, the type C, is 25 feet wide, and there are three to four times that across the street from the single-family uses. So I see that as not an issue. The buffer along the freeway, that's not protecting anybody but the new residents there, so it's not protecting the freeway from anyone. So I think it conforms to the zoning district with the proposed amenities, it's compatible with the land uses in the area, and I think it's a natural fit for that area. That's all I got.
Any other comment? Mr. Stephenson?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I agree with everything Ray says. I like the buffer to the north and to the south, so I think that's good. I really like all the amenities at this apartment. You know, the reason I asked about the Crown Point, to get, kind of get some comparison, is because I live in that neighborhood, and I've seen those apartments go up. And while traffic has increased, it's not been terrible, and that development, apartments and houses, only has the one entrance right now, until Spokane Street and Prairie can be rerouted, or however that will be. And it still hasn't been an issue there. There's kids and people and dogs, walking around on the walking trails, which this place will have also, so I, people are always using those. So I do like that. I think, you know, it's an allowable use within that area. Yeah, I mean, Ray's right, you could have a Lowe's or a Home Depot or any big box store in there with trucks all night long, so I think it's a good fit in that area.
Speaker Joe?
I have to agree with both of them. I think it's a good fit there. Personally, the only thing I would like to have seen changed is maybe two-level apartments along Woodbridge there, facing Woodbridge, just for the privacy of the people that are on that, that first group there. But other than that, I think it's got great amenities, and I think it'll be a good fit there. It's a good buffer to whatever's coming next to it.
Nancy?
I, I actually prefer to see something like this, which I would consider an apartment complex as opposed to a couple apartment buildings. It has amenities, it has parks, it makes, to me, it looks more like a community kind of in itself than a couple high-density buildings. So, and, and I do think it's probably in the appropriate place. As far as a special use permit goes, I think it, it meets that criteria and it acts as a buffer, and so I, I'm, I'm not opposed.
Ross, I know it's your first meeting, anything that you want to add with it?
No, just that I think it looks like it's well-done, and it's a good space for it. And, you know, I work with a lot of young people that struggle to find housing in Post Falls, end up going elsewhere, and I think it's a, it looks like a great place for the demographic I work with, and it was a good fit.
I agree, first, starting off, lived in an apartment in a complex very similar to this in the Boise area, and, and it was fantastic. I can think of three different meetings I've had in the last couple of weeks with young people who are trying to save money to buy a house, that this would be a good fit for, and oddly enough, they're having a hard time even finding apartments, so I think it's a very, very good fit. So, anyway, that being said, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I would move to approve special use permit USE-0003-2020, finding that it meet, it does conform to the zoning district, that it is an allowable use in the special, allowable special use in the CCS zone, as proposed, with the amenities, it is compatible with the land uses in the area, the public welfare, et cetera. And it also complies with the goals and policies of comp plan.
Second? Got a motion and a second call for a vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Brings us to our next item of the evening, new business. Mr. Manley, do we have any new business to cover?
There's none.
Yes, administrative or staff reports?
None, neither other.
None? How about commissioner comments? Anyone wishing to share anything?
Welcome to our new member.
Yes, Ross, welcome. Glad to have you. Everybody stay safe, and if we are wrapped up, then I would look for a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.